Good evening, would you please register for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, thank you for joining us, we're really excited, we're gonna have some students present some information to us in a little bit. They were up here earlier, I was thinking that they could be leading the meeting and we could be sitting out there.
Excellent job.
Teacher board members.
That's right.
These school teachers.
Right.
All of them.
Yes.
Well, they all told me they wanted to be school teachers. They actually all want to be teachers. I'm excited. Alright, so first on our agenda is to actually adopt the agenda, so if we could entertain a motion?
I move that we adopt the agenda for the regular Board Directors' Meeting for Tuesday, February 11th, 2020.
Second.
If we move second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, next is our community update, installation of permanent drive-by ballot drop-off locations. I'm gonna turn this over to Superintendent Marino to walk us through this.
We are gonna have Gray Kimsey come up and he's gonna speak a little bit to the process that we've gone through with the county to help with the elections process. I think, come on up here.
You know, I'm just not around kids at this age anymore. It's really, really fun.
It's fun.
So, thank you, thank you for having me on. So, I'm here to just express our appreciation. Evergreen School and the Clark County Elections Office has had a long-term relationship, going back many, many, many years, starting with polling places in your schools, then when we transitioned to vote by mail, we established election day only drop-off locations, and then more recently, for a variety of reasons, we are going to decrease the number of those election day only ballot drop sites and going to have an increased number of permanent ballot drop sites that are available beginning eighteen days before each election. And again, for a variety of reasons, including one which is security of schools, so, you know, it's very sensitive to having unidentified people going into schools on election day. We understand that, sympathetic to that, and so we are very grateful for Evergreen School's willingness to allow us to establish a greater number of permanent ballot drop boxes, including the two that we just recently completed, Shaheila and also Pioneer, or Pioneer's still under construction. And so, thank you again for that, those are gonna be really popular among our constituents, our voters, your constituents. And while I'm here, I'll put in a plug for continued cooperation at Sifton, Ellsworth, and maybe even the new Evergreen Administrative Office location would be great. And then finally, a big shout out to Gail Spohler and Mark Northern, ten for their help, are they, they're here tonight, but they've been, oh, there's Gail. Gail? Gail and Mark, Gail and Mark have just been really, really helpful, so, thank you very much.
And I just wanted to say, and also thank you, I was gonna mention Gail because she led that a lot, but also appreciate that you guaranteed all of our elections will pass in the future now we come to it. If that's not, okay.
Yeah, part of the deal.
Not part of the deal officially. Thank you, Gray, appreciate it.
I did have one question about that.
Go ahead.
Was that, does the installation of these drop boxes turn the schools into a polling place under the law? You walked out.
Aren't those places already identified as polling places?
I would imagine that that would be the case. I can tell you I know where it's at at Shaheila, because I was there the other day. It's just like a mailbox, you know, like one of the mailboxes, just kinda by the mail.
It's like the transit center.
Yeah, it's kinda, I would assume that it probably would, but I have no idea what the answer to that is.
Because when you mentioned those other schools, I think those are already polling places, so I'm not sure if Shaheila, or where he was.
They're polling places on the day, but if there's a ballot drop off, I wonder if that extends out to the eighteen days or more, because there are sets of laws about electioneering around polling places.
Do you know, and answer that, Gil?
Rob, I would assume that it would be, part of that is just not to place kind of campaign signs within that area until they run. And so, and you probably wouldn't want to hold a campaign rally around it when it's active. But I don't think it extends three weeks to five days.
No, and that wasn't, it was about when it was active, timeframe around election day, okay, thanks.
We'll check.
Never makes it easier to vote, that's good.
Okay, so next up is special recognition, we have two special recognitions this evening. The first is school counselor appreciation. We do have a proclamation to be read, Director Grewalt is gonna read that for us.
Whereas school counselors are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their full potential, and whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as their traits relate to career awareness and development, and whereas school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children, and whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves, and whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society, and whereas comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. Now, therefore, I, J. Inslee, Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim February 3rd through 7th, 2020 as School Counseling Week in Washington, and I encourage all people in our state to join me in this special observance. Signed this 31st day of January 2020, Governor J. Inslee.
Do we have some folks representing the counselors this evening that could come up?
Yeah, looks like we got Reuben standing up in the back of the room, Carl Smith.
Thank you very much.
Good evening and thank you for allowing this opportunity to recognize our counselors. We do have a couple of our counselors who've been nominated by the buildings and at the district level that we'd like to bring up and recognize them. From the secondary level, can I please have Christiana Reese join us? Gina Hooser. Phaedra Baldwin. Bobby Arnold. And I'd briefly like to recognize Katie Riley, August Stave, and Quinn Falcon and Ruth Bigback, who are now the joints here.
Thank you, and from elementary, elementary school counselors and social workers, Rafael Alcine from the district office. Tiffany Morrison from U of U.
Again, thank you very much. I was trying to think very briefly, how can I capture the great work our counselors do, day in, day out, and in a nutshell, working with them, and I feel very fortunate to go work with them. They work with their students on the absolute most difficult days, and they work with their students on the absolutely most hopeful and their brightest days, and that really is an exemplar of the caliber of counselors we have in our district, and I feel extremely fortunate that I can maybe work with them, so, thank you again.
I would definitely agree with that, Reuben, that our counselors have a tall task ahead of them, and we appreciate everything that you do for our students throughout our entire district.
Thank you, thanks very much, appreciate it.
Alright, now our next special recognition is National Black History Month, and for this we have a proclamation that Director Rogers will read for us.
Proclamation, whereas Black History Month is celebrated throughout the nation during the month of February, and whereas Black History Month is a time to celebrate and honor our African-American ancestry and our hidden history of civic, economic, professional, medical, scientific, military, and our systemic achievements, and serves as a reminder of the challenges that face all Black and African-Americans, and ongoing work to eliminate barriers based on discrimination, and whereas Black Americans continue to make significant contributions to the growth of our nation in business and philanthropy, and as ministers, doctors, nurses, artists, musicians, professors, teachers, lawyers, legislators, and soldiers, and whereas this year's theme, African-Americans and the Vote, highlights the sesquicentennial of the 15th Amendment, 1870, and the right of Black men to the ballot after the Civil War, and speaks to the ongoing struggle on the part of both Black men and Black women for the right to vote, and whereas Black Americans' strength, endurance, enterprise, and patriotism in spite of overwhelming obstacles have given people of all backgrounds the confidence, courage, and faith to pursue their own dreams, and whereas Black History Month serves as a reminder of the challenges that face all people of color, and that there is still more to be done to ensure equity under the law and equal opportunity, and whereas this month is a reminder that we can appreciate what connects us regardless of color or national origins, and move forward in the spirit of the Pledge of Allegiance with liberty and justice for all. Now, therefore, I, J. Inslee, Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim February 2020 as Black History Month in Washington, and I urge all people in our state to join me in this special observance. Signed, the 31st day of January 2020, by Governor J. Inslee.
Do we have anybody accepting this proclamation, or?
I don't think we do have anybody accepting the proclamation.
Or to speak, or to talk, or?
No, I mean, I think that the one thing that I would just say is that we continue as a district to work on equity, and through some of the work that we've had from our HR department on the diversity of hiring, trying to create a larger pool for us to bring additional staff into the district, creating a diverse workforce. We have, through the instructional cabinet, expanded work within social, emotional learning, and specifically, there's been a lot of work going into the equity and looking at different districts in the area and trying to bring a more focused approach to equity, and I think even tonight, we've got folks from DEA here, the equity team, that will be speaking at the workshop, and then talking in the workshop a little bit about the Board's results policies and OEs, and expanding maybe the results policies and having a specific policy on equity, and working as a system to kinda formalize what we've been doing, and it's not that we have been doing things, like we've been doing things for a lot of years, but it's kinda like, as Rob, Director Perkins mentioned, around safety, the fact that we didn't have an explicit policy on safety, we felt it was important to make that something that was really clear, and we need to do the same thing with equity. So, it's great to be able to celebrate February 8th, Black History Month. We obviously need to always continue to work to improve what we do, we represent a number of different students, we need to make sure that everybody feels welcome in our district. It'd be nice if you could come to every board meeting.
They are teaching us. There's probably a good, I was Marion as a kid in 1980, entered the sixth grade, and was, became the student of one of the first African-American teachers to be hired in the history of the district, I think it's 1980, her name's Gwen Williams. Ms. Williams taught fearlessly and confidently, and as I think back about it, she's probably one of the best teachers I ever had. We talked a lot about equity and about having it be important for students to see adults and teachers who look like them, but for me, in the white majority, it was really important for me to see someone who didn't, and I got an early age experience seeing someone who didn't, and seeing, she was kind to me, in that distant 1980s kinda teacher way, but I remember that experience so fondly, and I'll probably never stop talking about it when the time is right. Really, really good to have that, and I hope we can get that for everybody.
Well, I think we live in really challenging times where there's so much divisiveness, there's people who feel emboldened to say things that we don't want our children to say, we don't really want our children to be exposed to, we want our children to feel kind to each other, we want, we don't want them to have hate in their heart because they're not born to hate. And so, we evolve and are learning to do better and to be respectful and all of that, it's just, it's difficult work, because we have our, we have, as the majority, have to do the work, and it is challenging work, but it's work that has to be done, and we have to keep moving forward even when it's not easy, it's not an easy conversation because there's a lot of emotion attached to it, and people have been hurt, and we have to work through their, you know, the hurt, and so I think it's just important that for our children, we keep moving forward, and I feel like we have a strong commitment in the leadership here, and we just gotta keep, keep it up, it's critical, it's all I can, it's just really critical. Exactly.
Any comments from the board? Anybody in the audience that would like to comment on it? Okay, thank you. Alright, next up is our board consent agenda, we'll entertain a motion for a board consent agenda.
Move adoption of the Board's consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, next we'll move on to the superintendent consent agenda, so again, entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the superintendent consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, now we'll move on to very exciting part of our agenda, the naming of a facility, and I know we have some special guests here this evening, so first we're gonna do what we've been calling it Elementary School Number 22, which is our brand-new elementary school in the district located on 162nd. Mike, did we have some folks that we're gonna call up?
Yeah, I think is, Darcy's gonna come up, and has some inspirational words for the group.
I did not agree to inspiration.
She will leave the discussion. Do you have a microphone?
Yeah. But we can just go ahead, um, we can, because we're Elementary 22. We're flexible and brave. Okay, we're gonna get started with that. So, I'm gonna have the children come up, and these students are from, these are students from, is that on? Harmony and BBC, and I'll talk a little bit about the students from Pioneer for them. So, they really wanna come to the front and use the microphone, so, they've been practicing hard, they're willing to do that, so come on up, and I will introduce them as they come up. This is Kylie Smith, she is a third grader at BBC. Riley Seiverson is a third grader at BBC. This is Ivy Belton, she's a second grader at BBC, and she's here to participate from there. Tristan Myers is a second grader at BBC, come on up. This is Justin Beasley, he is a second grader at Harmony, and his sister Miriam Beasley, a third grader at Harmony, and Nina Perez is a third grader at Harmony as well, second, you won't believe it, in a minute. Okay, so these students, you guys can turn around, or do you wanna, I guess you're presenting to the board. We wanna see your cute fists and hear how smart you are. So, we want to thank you before we get started for giving us the opportunity to participate in this process of naming, recalling our forever name, and these students have come together three times, and their families have brought them to the meetings, so I wanna thank the families for bringing them to the meetings. We had three meetings on a Wednesday, or during the school, after the kids got out of school for early release, and then one evening meeting, and these kids came every single time, and were very active in going out and talking to their neighbors and classmates to try to gather votes on some of the names that were submitted. So, we started this process with forty-eight names, and during our first meeting, we got that down to ten names, and we used a process to determine what names we would consider. So, let's start with Kylie. So, can I use this microphone, too? Yes.
The name was Sam the Testo Kind, not trendy or without significant one-lasting mood.
Tristan, Justin, sorry.
The name should not be the same as other schools in the school district and surrounding school districts.
The name shall not be named after a business.
If a name, wait, if a name involves a person, the person must have a record of distinguished service, special school contributions, or other honors which reflect well on education.
Living na, or, living names shall be avoided. Schools may be named for an area or community in which the school is not all located, even if the area or community contains a family name as long as the other.
Criteria.
Criteria is less.
Sorry, that was my idea of friendly language. Okay, next is Justin.
Our first name was Emerald Elementary. This name received sixty-seven votes. We like this name because?
The area where the school will be built is green, it's a cool name, I love the color how everything is green, it reminds us of what was there, we're seeking in the Wizard of Oz, brains, heart, and courage, going to Emerald City.
Tristan.
This name revised, this name revised sixty.
Nina, we're still on Emerald, so it's Tristan's turn.
Look, they tossed it to me.
I think we reverse as a whole group, because we're a different school.
Um, um, all elevation of.
Are you reading Washington's? The letter A. Okay, go ahead.
Of all elevation of Emerald Elementary School mascot. Wait, five mascot-friendly parent commit, commit, wizard of Oz, what, what, what's worth, the base, seeking a brain, a heart, and courage.
Okay, Nina.
Now, this name revised sixty-four votes. We selected, we selected this name because the property where the school is currently being built is the last remaining piece of land of what was once a two-hundred-acre farm owned and operated by the Stickney family for over a hundred years. The neighborhood now surrounding the property was named Spring Brook Ridge to acknowledge the history of the property.
The third name is Spirit Ridge. This name received twenty-four votes. These are the reasons we chose this name.
It sounds pretty and cool, and we have school spirit.
It sounds pretty and cool, we have school spirit, it's, it's like happy spirit and courageous.
Like happy spirit and courage. Courageous.
Okay, now as I said earlier, we didn't have any attendance from the students at Pioneer, so we took these names, the ten that we had, and went out to the community and asked the community members to vote on the names, and while the students were out doing that, we kept getting more suggestions from community members, and the name Lewitt kept coming in as the kids were out collecting names, so we put that name back on the list, it was one of the original forty-eight, and we took that name back out when we narrowed the list down to four, and the kids voted on that, and at that point, we had hired staff, and we hired a teacher at that time from Pioneer, and she was able to talk to the Pioneer students, so we're gonna have her come up and talk about it with the Pioneer students, their feedback.
Hi, I'm Jillian Mossdeller, I'm a teacher at Pioneer, and I wanted to make sure that the students who are set to attend the new elementary school would have a voice in naming it, since they haven't attended the meetings. And so, among the names for Mount St. Helen's type terms that came up were Mount St. Helen's Elementary, which received twenty-one votes, Lewitt, which is a Native American name for Mount St. Helen's, received ten votes, Lewitt Lachla, Lady of Fire is the meaning, received four votes, and Luwala Klaaf, meaning Smoking Mountain. And Luwala Klaaf, meaning Smoking Mountain, received 6 votes. So, all of the Mount St. Helens-related names received a combined 41 votes. And the most popular among Pioneer students, 80% of students preferred Mount St. Helens Elementary.
Thank you to the distinguished members of the Evergreen School Board.
We had a lot of fun talking with our friends, family members, and neighbors about the name for our new school.
Thank you for taking the time to consider our choices. Do you have any questions?
Well, you all did such a fantastic job giving us the information. I would say that they're all really good names, which will be hard for the board to decide on a final name, but I'm sure we have lots of questions, we always do.
Was it hard to get people to give you feedback on the names once you kinda narrowed it down?
Not really, but in our classroom, the day we got a list, we asked our teacher if we could do a presentation at the end of the day, so our whole entire class got to help us choose.
So, one of the guidelines on how, how to pick the name was the name should not be the same as other schools, school districts, and surrounding school districts. So, when you picked these final names, did you like do research around if these were names at other schools? Like how, like how far, how did you know if they were other names of other places or not names of other places?
Uh, I don't know.
Uh, well, we like searched it up and, yeah.
Like searched, searched on the internet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Our parents searched it for us.
We'll help, that's okay. We all need a little help. So, do you guys mind me pulling you and asking you which ones you guys like? What's your favorite name? How about we go down the line, starting down here with you, and then you can go that way.
My favorite was Emerald Elementary.
My favorite was Emerald Elementary.
My favorite was Emerald Elementary.
I liked all of them.
My favorite was Emerald Elementary.
My favorite was Emerald Elementary.
I'll say it for you.
Do you have a favorite one?
And I forgot to introduce Addie, she's a 1st grader who's been to all the meetings as well. Oh, and Ivy is, is Emerald too. Do you like Emerald so much because it's attached to the Wizard of Oz? Why, why do you like it the best?
First of all, because it was my 1st grade, my 1st grade teacher's birthstone.
I like Emerald because I just like the color and the stones.
I like Emerald because I love the movie Wizard of Oz and the elements are like what should be happening at the school.
It's one of my favorite stones and I like green.
I like the name because Emeralds are like a kind of jewel and I think they look cool. They kinda rhyme.
Any more questions? I think you stoned us.
Thank you.
Thank you. You guys did an amazing job, thank you very much. Are you coming back next board meeting to entertain us and hear the results?
I was supposed to, probably.
But you are more than welcome to come hang out with us.
Probably, yeah.
Had they choose that, is it Emerald or are we still deciding?
At our next meeting, we're gonna make a decision. So, tell your parents you wanna come back and hang out with us. Where does the, the 25th?
25th.
25th February. Same time, same place.
All right, so next on our agenda is another naming of a facility. It is the renaming of the 49th Street Academy. Who's here to represent us?
Principal Amber Lindley from 49th Street Academy is here.
So, today we have with us Joshua, who's a 10th grader at 49th Street, and Marcus, who's a 3rd grader. Since our lovely Elementary 22 explained all the rules of what we went through to find a new name, we won't repeat all of those. So, we'll start off here with Marcus and we had a slideshow, but luckily we printed it off.
The reason why I wanna name our school Edwin T. Pratt is because he, he got his Masters in Social Work and became the exit Executive Director of the Seattle Urban League. He also helped create a plan for desegregation of Seattle Public Schools. He relentlessly championed open and equal access to education and housing opportunities for all of Seattle's residents. Pratt Fund Art Centers honors his memory practically to pursue its mission of making art accessible to everyone for people of all age, skill levels, and backgrounds.
The reason why we wanna name our school Dorky Hollingsworth is because she was denied becoming a teacher because of her color. She went and got her Masters in Social Work to help impoverished kid, children in the Seattle, Washington area. Dorky Hollingsworth became the first African-American to serve on the Seattle School Board. Her work served to empower and lift up children of color despite racially motivated attempts to ensure that only serving kids experienced the value of quality education. Dorky Hollingsworth started the discussion around equity and equality and education by helping us take the first step towards an education system that prepared all children for a better and more prosperous future.
Another, uh, reason, another name is Parkview Academy is because we can see the park.
So, those are our 3 names. On our slides, we had pictures of Edwin T. Pratt and then Dorky Hollingsworth, kinda what we would use. And I think really we, we wanted to focus on the equity piece and also someone that has overcome a lot. Our students definitely do that every single day. They overcome a lot of things and are empowered to be successful and, you know, move on to their comprehensive schools. So, that's why we really wanted to focus on a name that would empower our students. Do you guys have any questions for them?
Which one, which name was most popular or had the most votes if you voted on them? Which one was the top?
Uh, Dorsey Hollingsworth.
And which ones did you guys like? Which ones would you pick?
I would pick Dorsey Hollingsworth.
Do you know whether Mrs. Hollingsworth did work in Clark County?
She did not. Most of her work was up in the Seattle area. All the research we did though, she was the closest one to our area that, that did wanna work in civil rights and equity.
She was the school board director?
Yep, yep, exactly.
The portrait that you put, the, of Mrs. Hollingsworth, stunning work of art, has really just got my attention.
Yeah, and we had thought, when we saw that, that it would be cool in our new school if that were the name that we would go with. We would have the kids maybe create that mural in the building. So, what was the process that you used at your school to come up with these 3 final names? Um, a lot of staff, we talked with staff and then we talked with students and then we narrowed it down. I think we had 10 that we narrowed it down to and then we brought it out to the students and voted and those, these were the top 3. The, the, a lot of the younger kids really liked Parkview because it's very literal because we will have a view of the park, so. So, with the exception of Parkview, the other 2 seem like they were like really great learning opportunities for a lot of your students. So, asking the students how, was it fun kinda doing the research around the 2 names?
Uh, yeah.
To learn a lot about both those individuals?
Yeah. You have any questions?
I have a question. Are you excited about your new school? We're excited about that school.
Really excited.
It's kind of one of our, one that we're most excited about of all the schools that we're doing. We're really looking forward to that, it's gonna be really beautiful.
Thank you.
I paid a visit to the academy of 49th Street last year and was really impressed by the program, the education that's going on and how, how much dedication the staff has to the kids and their interest in learning. It's, it's a neat facility and I'm really happy to be able to give it a neat facility.
We do have some staff here. 49th Street staff, please stand up, let's get a recognition.
I'd say the same thing about the staff. I was able to go with Jay earlier this year and visit and look, you know, be able to visit the classrooms and then meet for maybe half hour, 45 minutes afterwards with Lauren and some of the other staff, some of the teachers and just the, they all just love that, the school. They, they love being there, they love helping the kids and it was, it was great to help problem solve, what different things we could do to try to help. Staffing situation really more than anything else is trying to make sure we had the appropriate number of staff members, so.
I'm really excited that you guys are actually getting a name, getting one that has real true meaning for you and not just the name of the street you're on. So, I'm really excited for you as well.
That's why we didn't say 9th Street.
It's gonna be a great school, just well-designed and, and really an awesome place to attend school. I'm, I'm really so pleased for, for everybody. I, I'm excited about that facility, it's gonna be awesome, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for all of your guys' hard work.
They've done a handshake that they worked on just for this presentation.
Oh, oh, wait, I can't see. I love the collaboration.
Yeah, that's good. Very good. That should be this official school handshake.
All right, as mentioned before, both of those will be brought back to our February 25th school board meeting where the board can make a decision on those names. We'll be discussing it later tonight, our workshop. All right, next on our agenda is the superintendent report. Superintendent Leno?
Yeah, I just, a few things. First thing, I just really wanted to, I, I had reported last meeting that I'd been able to visit all the elementary schools, there was one I hadn't gone to. So, I was able to get out to Harmony Elementary in the last couple of weeks and meet with them. Also, in the last few weeks, Evergreen, Cascade, Frontier, Wais, Mountain View, Shahealan Schools, and Covington just the other day. I, I really have enjoyed the opportunity to get out and, and talk with principals and kinda problem solve different issues that they may have in their building and just kinda continue to build the relationships within the district. I'm, I'm feeling really good about that and where we are today with that, so just wanted to kinda share that information. I also wanna share, one of the things that the district has worked on for the last few years is kinda trying to look at how do we provide equity in transportation, particularly with the dual-language immersion program that we have, because we, we have a program where we have the ability to transport kids within the boundary, but if you're outside of the boundary, it's difficult for us to make that happen. And I think a lot of times, families, the Hispanic families, the Spanish-speaking families are the ones disproportionately affected negatively by that because they don't always have the same opportunity to get their students when they change residency, if they do relocate. And they, I, I've heard stories over the years about the lengths that families go to get their students to school, sometimes well in advance of school starting because jobs change or whatever the case may be. So, we've worked with transportation really for the last few years, trying to come up with a solution for that issue. I'm happy to say that it looks like we have, it's not a complete solution in the first year or 2, but I think over time, it will become a complete solution where we basically look at the center of the district to draw a boundary line and anybody that lives on the north side, we would be able to provide transportation to Pioneer as the dual-language immersion school. And then anybody that's south of that line would be able to access Marion, dual-language immersion. And I think we're picking up many of the students that are right now having to try to make it work somehow. And then also, we'll have the ability through that process to recommend families when they wanna apply to get into one of the schools. If you're above a boundary or below, we can try to help direct folks to that. At the same time, over time, we'll start making that happen for 100% of the kids and in the meantime, if, if anybody can get to where the bus stops are, we can make transportation work. It's been, I know, we've talked about it as long as since John Dieter's been around. I really wanna thank Catherine Harrison, who's been a champion for the program, making that happen. I see her here tonight, as well as Yvonne Gaylord, Lindle Grant, Doreen Lane, the leaders in the transportation department that have really worked to try to come up with a creative solution for this. So, while it won't be 100%, I don't think, from the beginning, we're working towards 100% providing the opportunities for all of our families to make sure that they can participate. Unfortunately, we don't necessarily have slots for everyone, but at least those that are in, hopefully, we get to a point where getting to school doesn't become a barrier for families. So, that's, I think, really exciting. I know, I know the ELL folks are really happy about that and we'll continue to improve on that as we go. Really quickly, wanna mention, we'll talk more in-depth on the legislative update in the workshop, but next, I guess, next Thursday, I'm going up and meeting with Melissa Gomboski and I've got 12 meetings set up with legislators, our, some of our local legislators, as well as legislators, statewide legislators, to try to provide any information I can, even if it doesn't necessarily create solutions in this session because it's a short session and we hear repeatedly that education received theirs, there not gonna be a lot of attention paid to education this time around. It can help create, providing information for folks so that next session, in a, in extended session, we might be able to get more traction. And more than anything else, just kinda try to create relationships with legislators so they know who Evergreen is, they know who I am, and they know that they can kinda look to us to provide information. I think we've been very solution-oriented. We, we, I think, from the beginning, have tried to work with legislators and not blame legislators. Legislators have difficult jobs, just like you all on the school board have difficult jobs and anybody that works in the district has difficult jobs because you, a number of different constituencies you're trying to work with. The only way to try to make things, advance things really is to work with people rather than to lob grenades over... than to lob grenades over, you know, their shoulders and try to blame them. It's not a blame, I think everybody wants to do the right thing, it's just there's different points of view on things, and there's different levels of resources. So I feel like that time will be well spent next week. The following week, the 26th, myself, I think the Seattle superintendent, Spokane superintendent, Tacoma superintendent, maybe Highline, are specifically talking about special education funding. I think that's, what we're hearing is that's one of the only bills that might get advanced for a little bit of additional funding, and it's really to continue to highlight the shortfall in the special ed area and increase the multiplier. We've got a projected about an $8 million shortfall for this year in special education, where the levy has to step in. Special education is considered basic education at the state level, clearly, the Supreme Court has determined that. However, the solution is still local levy to help fill the gaps within special ed. We believe that the state should fund it and will all share that. I'm not saying it's going to happen, but we need to continue, again, this is enough, it's providing information, continuing to work and work towards closing that gap. So that's, that's going to be the 20th and the 26th. Excited about that. And then the last thing I want to mention really quickly is, I want to provide this Washington State School Directors Association recognition in recognition of 20 years of board service. And there's only one up here that I'm aware of that has 20 years of board service. I'm not even sure that the rest combined get to 20 years, but Victoria Bradford has been a school board member for the Evergreen School District for 20-plus years, and so this is recognition for Victoria Bradford. I think his name is Mike, because I can't remember what his name was, the little boy that clapped at everything. We needed him here now. He just leaves now. But anyway, I mean, Victoria's had a great career here and it continues, and been very influential on a lot of important things that have happened in the school district over time, so thank you for everything you've done.
Thanks for putting up with me.
Yeah, actually, I started about 20 years ago, so we actually both, I've been, I've been putting up with you for 20 years, but you haven't been putting up with me for 20 years either.
Okay.
We've been around each other. So anyway, that's all I have for tonight.
Great, thanks, Mike. Congratulations, Victoria.
Congratulations.
All right, next up is monitoring district operations. First is operational expectations OE5, which is financial planning. This is a second reading, and I'll turn this over to Mike.
It is a second reading, and it basically just makes a couple changes, but we workshop this earlier. We also had a first reading in our meeting in the end of January. Basically talks about how we develop budgets, what we may do and what we may not do. We've talked about it a few times, and I would recommend that the board moves forward with this, with the proposed revisions.
All right, thank you. I'll open it up to the audience for questions or comments. All right, we'll entertain a motion.
Move the board accept the proposed revisions for operational expectations OE5, financial planning, as presented for approval.
Second. We'll go ahead and open up the board for questions or comments. Kind of like with Mike, I think we've looked at this one several times, dating back to last summer.
Yeah, it started in August, I think.
Okay, it looks like what we talked about last night.
Took you to keep the time with it, and I think it makes it clearer, and it's time to proceed.
And again, I think just for the audience, it's, it just shows the board's commitment to making sure that we keep an eye on how we handle our finances and what the expectations are to the superintendent for that.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, well then, we'll now take a vote to accept the proposed revisions for operational expectations OE5. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it is approved as presented. All right, so the next one is OE5, financial planning interpretation and indicators.
Yeah, so what we do, the board sets the operational expectation, and then there's an interpretation, and how do we provide evidence of that. So again, this document is something that we worked up a couple of weeks ago, or I guess it was about four weeks ago, and then had our first reading three weeks ago, and I have not heard of any additional changes to it, so I would, at this time, I would recommend that the board accepts the proposed revisions of OE5, financial planning interpretation and indicators as presented for approval.
All right, and again, I'll open this up to the audience for questions or comments. And then we'll call for a motion from the board. I move the board accepts the proposed revisions for operational expectation OE5, financial planning, interpretation, and indicators as presented for approval.
Second.
All right, then we'll go ahead and open up to the board for questions or comments.
I think, again, it's been worked up, it's been discussed, and everything looks good, keep things under, you know, control, with good indicators to let us know what's happening in the district for good sound financial planning.
I'd invite anybody with an interest in this district's budget to read this document. It's very clear, and it describes exactly the boundaries around which the board has set the budget in general, the things that we're most interested in, the idea that the budget should be related to our results policies, outcomes for students, citizenship, safety, graduation, et cetera. And I appreciate the clarity of the document.
Anything else?
I just have, there looks like there's a tight bow on the very front page of it, on the date.
It's the second of the second of the...
Oh, 11 of 20.
Of 11 of 20, yeah.
Yeah. But that's it, otherwise.
Would bear today's date correctly, right?
All right, so we'll go ahead and take a vote to accept the proposed revisions for operational expectations OE5, planning, financial planning, interpretation, and indicators. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's been approved as presented. The next one is operational expectations OE12, which is facilities, and this is a first reading, so we worked up did at our last board meeting in January. Did you want to bring?
No, no, no. Yeah, I, we did workshop this, so this is OE12, facilities. Again, it talks about the superintendent will develop and execute a facilities maintenance plan, so rather than focusing on construction and renovation, it was really more maintenance, maintenance and capital renewal that we're looking at within this plan. There were, there were a couple of things that were removed, projecting total cost of ownership as capital decisions were made was removed, because that's something that's an ongoing thing that we do. And we talked about assisting the board in anticipating the needs of the district and providing facilities necessary to meet these needs in a timely manner. So what we typically, the board came up with these policies, we talked as a board at the retreat around the cabinet kind of bringing back some potential revisions to the board's OE at the board level, and this was really worked by Sue Seinbrenner to provide that information to the board. We discussed it last week. And then in the workshop tonight, we'll talk about what the evidence would be to support this. So this really represents what we talked about in the workshop here three weeks ago. And with that being said, I would recommend that you accept the proposed revisions for OE12, facilities, as presented for first reading and move it forward for a second reading and approval.
All right, questions or comments from the audience? Then we'll call for a motion.
Move the board accept the proposed revisions for operational expectations OE12, facilities, as presented for first reading and move it forward for second reading approval.
Second.
All right, so moved to second, and let's open it up to the board for questions.
Last with the other one, we've been talking about it for months and making sure that it was correct, and this aligns the facilities policy with the recommended best practices of facilities management. Sue was very helpful in explaining and the framework of things and the way that she has to do her work under the law, and now it looks like it matches something that they're very comfortable with, without sacrificing our need for the data.
And I guess I would just bring up, too, that we started in the summertime relooking at all of these and making sure that this is what this, you know, board superintendent team needed moving forward, and that the, like what Mike said, we're going to look at the indicators tonight to make sure it aligns and the things that the board wants to measure. So we're just kind of taking a closer look at all of them again this year, and that's why we've been throughout the school year, each month, having a different one that we're bringing forward. So there'll be more to come. Any other questions or comments from the board? All right, so at this time, we'll take a vote to accept the proposed revisions for operational expectations OE12, facilities, as presented, move it forward for second reading and approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we're going to bring that one back for a second reading on February 25th. All right, next is board comments, comments by the school board.
Oh, gosh, there's been so much going on. I appreciated the school improvement plan meeting that we had last week, and as always, it's interesting to hear what's going on in schools and where the challenges are and what, what the plans are to keep moving things forward. I was, I'm kind of astounded at how much people are loving that new reading curriculum. I'm not kidding. It's like every single school that I've been in or that I've had a chance to speak to a teacher, they love that reading curriculum, and it was fun when we got to go see it for ourselves, but it's, it's been, it's been a hit, and that's nice. We don't usually get that kind of feedback from curriculum adoptions that often, so that one was kind of cool. Julie and I, we had the opportunity to be at an at-your-service luncheon over at Sunset last Friday, and as usual, Usain and his crew just did a bang-up job of giving the etiquette lesson and then serving a beautiful meal for the fifth graders there, and it's so cute. I mean, the students are just so kind of taken by all the fanciness of the meal and the service and being waited on, and it's such a neat opportunity for them to, to get that etiquette lesson into, I don't know, it's just, it's fun, it's really fun, yeah. Probably have something to say about it, too.
It was really interesting, the kids had a great time with it. Bill was there as well with us and Gaylord, so we had an opportunity to sit with, you know, four or five students each and kind of have some conversation while we, while we ate the meal. They, they were in a course prior, learning about the etiquette before the meal, and so sometimes, like, you know, and I told them, because, you know, sometimes you make mistakes at fancy dinners, right, everyone does, I don't care who you are, but everybody has something that happens, you know, one of the, one of the gals, she like drops her knife, and then she like picked it up, she like barely, she caught it just in time, and I'm like, it's okay, everybody makes a mistake at dinnertime, you know, not everyone can be perfect. So I think that's kind of the important lesson out of it, too, is that it's okay, you know, because it's human, and so, but it was fun to kind of learn from them the things that they learned about prior, and then having that conversation with them and getting to know them and listen to them about their school experience, and Usain and his group did a great job with the meal, it was really nice.
Dinner conversation is hysterical. There's, it's interesting, it's really interesting, but I enjoy it. It's one of my favorite activities now, are those lunches, so I appreciate it a lot.
My calendar isn't, technology is failing me, but the big thing that happened was that the, Monica Stoner calls them the W's, the State Superintendent's Association, the State Business Officers Association, WAZA, WASBO, and the Directors Association held their legislative conference in Day on the Hill on Sunday and Monday, and Jenny and I were both in attendance on Sunday, and then as your region's member of the legislative committee, I got to lead people into meetings with legislators all day Monday. Exciting. We heard from Chris Wright, all the state superintendent, who for the first time actually made me feel hopeful about seeing some success with clearing fees away from college and high school. He's got a lot of aspiration and a decent plan to do it, and believes that it could happen this year. We heard from Governor Inslee's advisor on education, I had her name up, because during the Q and A, I got to thinking about pathways. No, it was the Q and A for Senator Lomond, but she was the third one to speak before we got into the process panels and things like that, but just talking about how this year is a short session, and like you said, don't place hopes and expectations too high seems to be this overwhelming message. But they still talked about the direction that we need to take and the shortfalls in special education, and gave a listen to superintendents and business officers, just stood up and talked about the weirdness in the sad healthcare and some of the unfair things that are just kind of structured into it for districts, and there could be some motion on those bits. The best part for me was talking with the legislators the following day. I got in to see Paul Harris, and Ned Cleveland, Sharon Wiley, Monica, and I think there was one other, but what was remarkable about it was how much time and thought that they're putting in education, and we've got some really good delegation people. And we received our thanks, Senator Cleveland received our thanks again for the work that she did last session to narrow our shortfall to a point where it was possible instead of really painful. I mean, it's still something we got to continue thinking about, but she was grateful to hear that each time. Had Kyle Sproul, the new board member from Vancouver, with us all day, coming to those meetings. What strikes me about all of this is that, very broadly speaking, every single interest group at the state level appears to be aligned with special education. It's the trauma that kids are bringing into schools and the way that that's disrupting the learning environment for them and for the other students, and how much more we're honoring counselors today, how much more counselors need to be a part of the conversation, both career guidance and behavioral health counselors, and there was some whole persons' light motion on that. The most impressive thing was having Mark Watrin, who's a new board member and battleground and a retired teacher, with me and Kyle and Monica, and we just had this problem-solving conversation about what constitutes a teacher's scope of duty. And the tone in the room was real hopeful. She's in this leadership room now, just above the, above the house, and she's turned it into this comfortable place just to have these conversations, which made me believe that in the long session next time, there could be some real progress on policy and on funding from both sides. Just have to keep building those relationships and help people understand that this is for kids and for the future. We told them everything that they can do, because there were policy bills about healthcare and homelessness and things, to stabilize the lack of the child is going to accrue benefits at schools, so I'm just glad to do it, glad to keep doing it. It was a good day. We'll talk about the individual bills in the workshop.
Thanks for representing us up there.
I'll go real quick. Just to piggyback on Rob real quick, besides all of the legislative stuff and getting in in front of it, I wasn't able to go to Day on the Hill, but I was up there on Saturday doing conference planning for next year's annual WAZA conference. I'm part of that advisory committee. So I stayed over and went with Rob on Sunday and got a lot out of that as well. One of the biggest takeaways for me was that we are the sixth largest school district in the state of Washington, and we are constantly discussing, you know, the things that... in the state of Washington, and we are constantly discussing, you know, the things that we're lacking and what we need more of and, and those kind of things. But we also are a large district and we get, we can be a little bit more creative with things. Whereas we have, I think it was 244 small districts in the state of Washington that don't have that capability. They're, they're very, and so one of the biggest takeaways for me was when we're looking at bills or laws or funding equations, things like that, like we can't just think of ourselves. You know, it's, we are one of the bigger schools, so we have a bigger voice in a lot of things. And just being mindful of our counterparts in some of the smaller rural districts that are much worse off, and some of these decisions impact them far more than they do any of the larger districts. And it was kind of heart wrenching. I think one of the statistics that was given was with the funding model and the calculation, especially with counselors being, school counselors appreciation month. With the way the calculation, it was that the state of Washington would only be able to get one counselor for all seventh graders throughout the state of Washington. It was...
It's something like that. It was one, this funding allocation for one nurse for all seventh and eighth grade, the whole state.
The whole state.
One nurse. So every school district that's hiring a nurse is hitting the levees or taking away from educational programs in order to supply that service to kids. It's necessary, but it isn't, it isn't allocated in the model. I kind of want to put that, because there isn't a flexibility to do that.
Well, and I think giving those kind of examples, like the real true examples, when you've got a district that says, you know, using this, I could, every 17 minutes, my counselor would have to switch schools. And if she could teleport, she could potentially get another 15 minutes at each, you know, at some of the schools. And it's, it's, that's not okay, especially in the, the times that we're living in. We need them more than ever, and our students need them more than ever. One of the, one of the notes I wrote down that just alarmed me was that Washington is the highest, highest use suicide rate.
Two a week.
Two a week. And I, my heart just broke, because that, that, that's not okay either. We're, we are failing our students in those aspects. So that's my two cents coming away from conference. So I plan on being there next year.
Thanks Jenny. All right, anything else for anyone? All right, next up is future agenda items. We have anything we want to add?
You know, from Lori earlier about the book studies coming in, like a March or April?
Yes.
For the Schmoker leading with, what's the title of that?
Leading with focus.
Leading with focus.
Next meeting, right?
Yeah.
February 25th.
And then the DeAngelo book about white fragility is coming up after that.
Yeah. I can't remember the date.
I'm going to need to get that date so I can make sure I finish it.
I think it was, Rob's right, it's in the email.
Yeah.
Lori sent out the dates.
Thank you.
Good reminder.
I think that's something that's been on my mind, is that we've got to talk about the content, especially with that second book.
I know, that book is good.
Yes. And we've got to have people in the room who can help us workshop that. Hate to talk about race and just be six white people sitting around talking about race. That's not the way we want to do it, but that's why it's a public meeting. I guess we'll clap that the equity team is here today. Thank you for coming.
Okay. All right, next up is citizen comments. Looks like we have a couple of people that have signed up, so any citizen wishing to address the board about an item not on the meeting's agenda may do so during the designated time, as long as the comments are not personnel related or about an individual employee or student and are not legal in nature. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the board. So we have two people that signed up. Rob Aguilar, oh, come on up. If you'll come up to the podium, give us your name and address.
Yes. Yes, my name is Rob Aguilar, I'm at 10403 Northeast 21st Street in Vancouver, just across the 205 of newer development over there. I am a senior non-commissioned officer, retired from the army after almost 36 years of service. I also have a daughter who is 17 years old, who is a junior in Mountain View High School. And what I wanted to speak with you folks about just briefly here this evening, I'm going to be kind of the odd man out, just going to tell you right up front. And it would be basically to, to tell you this. Today, after retiring from the army after almost 36 years, I am today a teacher. I am an Army Junior ROTC instructor at Oregon City High School. Yes, I actually commute from Vancouver, clear to Oregon City. My first class is at 6:15 in the morning, my last one, I get home about 6:30, 7 o'clock at night, after about an hour and a half, hour and 45, I commute. That's a daily thing for me. But what I'm here to talk to you about just briefly is to this, and this is not about being fatalistic, this is not about living life and by the worst case scenario, but ma'am, you spoke yourself about failing our students. And I would ask you folks, how, and I mean this with all due respect, but how many Marjory Stone Douglas's do you have to have? How many Sandy, Sandy Hooks do you have to have? How many Columbine's do you have to have? And I have friends who are at Columbine before at least we begin to realize that the values that we ourselves were raised on, those time-tested, time-honored values upon which our country was founded are oftentimes not being taught in the home anymore. And that is at least a major part of what is going on here, a, a major part of the problem. And so what I'm here to talk with you about is for you folks to at least consider the opportunity to be able to actually have an Army Junior ROTC program in one of the schools in this district. Oregon, the state of Oregon where I am is the third most underserved state in the Union. I'll put it this way, the state, Puerto Rico, which is not even a state, has more programs than Oregon does. It's, it's kind of crazy. We teach and we talk about those values, right? We teach, and I'm, again, being respectfully candid here, we have teach, we, ours is all, what we teach, this is not about marching and about shooting air rifles, that's only the tiny little side that public see. What we teach, Junior ROTC is not Army boot camp, it is not Army basic training, and you're looking at our former Army Joel Sergeant, who did it for seven years and trained hundreds of young men and women in all facets of military life. Army Junior ROTC is a values and leadership class that is taught, let's just call it with a military flavor to it, okay? But what ROTC also is not, like I said, it's not boot camp, and with all due respect, what it is not, it is not a school or a district's dumping ground for all of their problem children either, like, oh, we got this young man, this young lady that's got some problems, let's stuff them into JRTC and they'll whip them up into shape. That is not what Junior ROTC is. I count right now seven four-point-plus students in my Corps of Cadets, at least 15 that are 3.5 or higher GPA, and numerous National Honor Society members in my Corps of Cadets right now also. They're highly decorated and actually known across the country. And again, you know, you talked about failing our students, ma'am, okay? You have many teachers that, that teach, that I'm sure in their lives and in front of their students, they model and emulate those core values that we call in the Army, loyalty, duty, respect, selfless service, honor, integrity, and personal courage, absolutely. Well, the Junior ROTC, that's actually in our curriculum. This is actually what we teach. And we teach what other teachers either can't teach, won't teach, are unwilling to teach, or are being prevented from teaching. And that is those time-tested, time-honored values. We take all those years of service that we had, and we try and put that good stuff into those kids so that someday, when they go out into the world, they will have those tools, those weapons in their backpack to go out into that unforgiving world out there that doesn't really care, you know, about what, I mean, I'm being respectfully candid, here in the schools, we want to talk about me, 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 me. Out there, it's all about what you can do, it's not about who you are. And so I would like the opportunity, folks, if I could, sometime this year, to be able to speak with you and give you a formal presentation on what is, what is involved in actually having a Junior ROTC program in one of your schools here. It's amazing to me that the city of Vancouver, fourth largest city in the state of Washington, and not one school in all of Vancouver District or Evergreen District has even one Junior ROTC program of any service. That to me is stunning, stunning to me. It is a chance for your kids to get those values put into them. And it's not for kids, I'll tell you one other thing, it's not. It's also not a program just for kids who are joining the military someday. It is not at all. Nationwide, it is less than 20% of all Junior ROTC cadets ever end up joining any branch of the military in their entire life. So it's actually statistically very unlikely that they'll actually end up joining. This is not about military as in a high school, it's a leadership and values class. And ma'am, again, you talked about failing our students. Dr. James Dobson himself said, ma'am, in our efforts to give our children everything we didn't have when we were their age, we have failed to give them that which we did have. And he was absolutely right. Absolutely, he was. So I, what I'm here to do is to propose to this school board that they at least consider the opportunity to get a full presentation, we actually have a very professional PowerPoint presentation that goes along about what is involved when a school takes on a Junior ROTC program at one of their high schools. Okay, you have, you have districts in Florida, folks, with 11 high schools, and five of them will have a Junior ROTC program of one service or another. That's amazing. The last time I went to the course at Fort Knox, Kentucky, okay, I'm sitting with a sergeant there who was from a small rural high school in outskirts of Atlanta, Georgia, I think an hour and a half from Atlanta. The whole high school had less than 500 kids, 165 cadets in their program. And I asked the sergeant, I'm like, Sergeant, are you telling me? Yes, Sergeant Aguilar, better than a third of the kids in my high school are in Junior ROTC. That is extraordinary. And that opportunity is here, and I can tell you, because Washington and Oregon are two of the most underserved states in the Union for this, for Junior ROTC, that they would be put very high on the order of merit list for such an opportunity too.
I know.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
First, I wanted to thank you for your service.
Somebody had to do it, I volunteered.
I was a military wife, so I can appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
We have the ROTC at Heritage. When did that stop?
Some time ago.
I've been on board for a long time.
I got here, I got here from California in 2011, I moved back home in North West to retire, and there wasn't one when I moved here.
I feel like our neighbor girl was in it at Heritage at one time.
And I know that there's a program, I think at Prairie, there was for quite some time.
There is, there's one occurring, there's one about.
Program, yeah.
There is.
And we have some of our kids, I think through Cascade, I think access that. And, and I know that just as recently as last summer, there was some conversations with Heritage and looking at it potentially. So we'll probably get in contact with, I'll talk to Bill, our chief acting officer.
There, there is a process that they do where Cadet Command actually sends down a couple of representatives to do, what do you want to call it, like site visits, you know, to even determine the feasibility of being able to do such a thing. It is true that only certain high schools are going to have the facilities or these kinds of things that can support, it is true.
Thank you for the information. Because it's on the agenda, we really can't respond to it.
No, and I understand, yes, ma'am. Well, I have a couple of my cards that I can leave with the lady here, definitely. If somebody wants to contact me, I would be glad to speak them about it if that opportunity was presented.
Perfect, you, we appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Gray Kinsey is also on the list, is he still here?
No.
He wanted to answer Rob's question from earlier.
Come back. Excited, this topic is, thank you.
I think that's it, yeah.
Yeah, he spoke first. All right, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to the board, come up, or give us your name and address?
Hey, you live around here? You live around here?
Lauren Sickles, my address, 3013B Northeast 103rd Loop, Vancouver. And I am parent educator at 49th Street Academy, I'm wearing our colors today. I really enjoyed the presentation on the name. What I wanted to speak to you about was just how much I've enjoyed, I got to be on the design team for the new building, just to give input. It was an awesome process, and I'm really excited. I just recently got to watch the 3D walkthrough of it. Another coworker of mine was really impressed with how the architects came out like two or three times, I think, and then one spent an entire day just watching how we use our facility, which is unlike any other way a school is used. And so they brought that to the designs, and we really saw how that manifested and how the building started to take shape. So I'm very excited about what is happening. I'm very thankful to the citizens of Evergreen for passing that bond. So our students who in many ways have the greatest needs, in the past have often received the least and the last of what we as a community have to offer them. But I feel with this building connected with legacy and transition program, and the opportunities I think that's going to create is really going to elevate what our students are able to achieve and what our staff are able to do for them. So I really appreciate you guys making this possible.
That's good. Did they have, did they bring over the, the finishes, like what the interiors are going to look like and the...
I know, yeah, well, at one of the meetings, they showed that to us, yeah. So we got to see some color schemes.
Good.
And just the, the modern features in the building are amazing, and the fact that there's like windows everywhere, which in our building is not the case, repurposed office building. The fact that we're going to have outside areas that we can go into nearly any time of the year, that we will actually have a gymnasium, that we can have real PPE programs, and those sort of things are, is just, I think it's going to be transformational for our kids and for our staff that work there too.
It's, it's a nice, it's a nice building, it really is, yeah. I'm excited for you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren.
I'll pay him later.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the board this evening? All right, so at this time, we're going to go into recess where we'll sign papers, we'll reconvene back in this room for a board workshop, where we will have an Evergreen Education Association Equity Team introduction and overview, naming of facility debrief, operational expectations OE twelve facilities interpretation and indicators, legislative updates, superintendent's update, a board meeting debrief, and then at that time, we'll go into an executive session where we'll review the performance of a public employee. Thank you.